It's called order at 5:30 PM, Tuesday, August 23rd, 2022, in room 137 of the Edison Building. The Board acknowledges this site and all our PS sites are situated on the ancestral lands of the Dakota people, and we honor the Dakota nations and the sacred land of all indigenous peoples. Interested members of the public are encouraged to view this meeting remotely at youtube.com/isd535, where the livestream video may be found. Present at this meeting are School Board members, Superintendent Kent Pikel, a non-voting ex-officio member, and Assistant School Board Clerk, Ms. Michelle Severson. Ms. Severson, would you please go on the roll?
Thank you, Director Amundson.
Here.
Clerk Barlow.
Here.
Director Garcia.
Here.
Treasurer McLaughlin.
Here.
Happy birthday.
Thank you.
Chair Marvin.
It's not everyone knows.
29 once again, here.
Yes.
Vice Chair Nathan.
Here.
Director Workman.
Here. Shall we sing?
No, we will not sing. We now offer the opportunity to say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
2.01, approval of the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda?
Move approval, second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Agenda is approved. 3.0, comments to the Board. We really do appreciate all community members who are invested in ensuring that all children receive an equitable, quality education, and we offer this time for those who want to speak to the Board about issues specific to education. You have access to the guidelines for speakers and know that, among other things, personal attacks are neither appropriate nor allowed. We ask that when your name is called, please have a seat at this table and provide your name and whether you are a resident of the school district. In order for the microphones in this room to be effective and to sound consistent, we ask you to remain seated and speak directly into the microphone, the same way that we need to do at the Board table. Our first speaker for the evening is Mr. Weston Lund. Mr. Lund.
Dr. Marvin and Directors of the Board, we have a lot of partners in Rochester Public Schools. Some of them are parents and others who never collect a check from Rochester Public Schools. Some of them are nonprofits and volunteers, and others are business partners who become much more than the financial relationships through which we purchase various services. One of our most important business partners is First Student, who operates most of our school buses and transportation, and we have got a really critical leader retiring from that critical partner, John Gates, and we want to take a moment to acknowledge him and thank him for really extraordinary leadership. I had the chance to be out with John and Jeff Cappers at the Bus Barn a couple weeks ago, and I could see the, the only word is passion with which he has approached keeping those buses running and safe and effective and efficient for our students. And so it's my honor to ask Scott Sheridan, our Executive Director of Operations, and Jeff Cappers, our Transportation Services Manager, to come up and help us embarrass John and thank him for his service. So Scott and Jeff, please. And John.
This makes me nervous. You can sit in the middle here. I've been waiting for this. Oh, I'm kidding. I'm going to try. Tonight, we're here to recognize John Gates. As you know, Superintendent Pikel was mentioned. He is the manager of First Student, who is our primary transportation carrier for our students, so he's responsible for routing, organizing, hiring the drivers, the equipment of getting students to our, 12,000 students a day, about 12,000, to our sites safely and back home on time, all, of course, in a safe manner. It's really been truly my pleasure to work with him over these years, the past eight years since I've been in charge of transportation. He's always found a way to get it done, even when the hiring issues with bus drivers and the lack of qualified drivers, he still found a way to get it done. Numerous times, you saw him out there driving a bus himself until 5:30, 6 o'clock at night. He's up at 4 o'clock checking weather, driving streets to make sure, particularly in the winter, of course, to make sure that the streets are clear enough. I don't think he's out in the spring doing it, but certainly in the winter, driving the routes to make sure that it's safe to, to have school. And so he's going to be hanging up his little fluorescent vest after 29 years of service at First Student. I don't know if you knew this, but he is a John Marshall Rocket graduate, born and raised here in Rochester, is that correct? And he was also an employee here at the district for about five years, working kind of in Jeff's area in transportation for five years before he then went to Layde Law, which was absorbed by First Student. So the past 29, am I right, 29 years, is that correct? Yeah. Not 30? Couldn't make it to 30?
It's not too late.
Damn. So many people have asked me that. I don't know if you knew this, as well, he is a huge Minnesota Gopher basketball fan, so we got him season tickets for the next 10 years to the Gophers. I'm kidding. It was in our hearts. You should have said football, because they already have. Oh. The thought's there, John. Okay. Well, one of the most remarkable stories, John and Jeff and I actually have a little saying that we use because of, there are certain events that happen during, in transportation that causes us to go, oh my goodness, we should write a book. And so we have many, many chapters that we could be writing. One of the most significant, which really proves his leadership, what happened in February of 2017. For those of you that you were here, this was a very unfortunate accident that happened in the shop area, First Student in the shop, where a propane bus tank exploded, injuring an employee and starting a huge fire in their building. Significant damage to the building. I thought my time was up.
Soundtrack.
Did you do that? I was hoping. You were hoping, okay. But I was talking about the, this huge fire that occurred, and this was in February. We still had three months more of school to go, and through John's leadership, he had contingencies in place instantly. He even worked out of a construction trailer for the rest of the year while the building was being rebuilt, never missed a beat, still provided all the transportation necessary to get the job done, and that's a testament to his character and his ability, like the superintendent said, his passion. So as we close this chapter of the book, I hope that you and the Board, the Superintendent, and Cabinet, and the parents and staff join me in thanking John for all his years of service at First Student. Now Jeff's the funny guy. I'll let him talk. So I've had the pleasure of working with John since 1997. That's when I went to transportation, and we've, like, like Kent said, this, this is more than a business deal. This, this is a true partnership, and it's very special.
deal. This, this is a true partnership. And it's very special. There's very few districts in the state that have the relationship that we did. I don't know if you know, but John's dad was an administrator at the school, in the district, a pretty high up one. He was like director of elementary and secondary when he retired. His brother, that's a principal. So he's, he's steeped in this. He's, that, that relationship that just, that, that he's bought into the district as well, not just as, as a First Student location manager. So that's, that, that's just, just been a valuable asset to us over the years. You know, we've had our disagreements at times. We agree to disagree. There's a couple of times I'd like to hit him in the shin with a seven iron. But no, at, at the end of the day, we, we work things out, and, and I, I'm, I'm gonna truly miss you, man. We've had, it's been a good run. To keep it brief, I'm really looking forward to my first Labor Day in 34 years. When my wife and I made this decision, it's like, she made a, she made a airline, and we're going to Nashville that, for that Saturday of Labor Day. And it's like, really? She, I guess she didn't want me to back out. They painted my office this week because I kinda gave the new manager, you know, you can move in, he's been named, my peers, he's gonna do a great job. But all of a sudden, I'm sitting there, my last day in the office was yesterday, in that office. And I said, wow, this is, you painted. Maybe I'll stay. Some of the things I won't miss, getting up early, you know, staying late, getting calls from like Mark Coesley at 6:00 in the morning. All those things happen, but I enjoy the people. I mean, Jeff and I have a, you know, we, we had a great ride. You said, you said it very well, and I'm gonna miss everyone. And rumor has it that I may be considering sub-teaching at a certain middle school. So we'll see. He's got us, I'm gonna make him sign a contract. With that, thank you all for, for your support over the years, and thank my staff out of First Student.
John, you. Mr. Gates has done an outstanding job of keeping our kids safe and keeping our buses running, and I, I guess that all of us just wish you were taking a bus to Nashville. We wish you, we thank you deeply, and we wish you well. Okay, 4.02, Mobile Health Unit. Dr. Pecel.
Dr. Marvin and Board members, I mentioned before, we have lots of partners in Rochester Public Schools, none more important than Mayo Clinic. And this summer, we were really excited to pilot something that I know folks who've been working on these issues in Rochester much longer than I have have wanted to do for a long time, which was a mobile health unit, to go where our families are and provide them with critical support like immunizations. It was a pilot. It was a new experience, but it was one that was, I think, on the whole, successful, though some lessons were learned. So it's my honor to ask Leah Bancroft, who's our Health Services Coordinator, and Caitlin Norris, who is the Mayo Health Clinic Health Program Coordinator, to join us to give an overview of what we did this summer and what we learned. So thank you. I think we're ready for the PowerPoint in the booth. There we go.
Well, I'll introduce myself. So good evening, Dr. Pecel and board. I am Leah Bancroft. I'm our Coordinator of Health Services, and this is Caitlin Norris. We have become fast and furious friends through our community partnership that we have with Mayo Clinic. This brings me so much joy, because as Dr. Pecel mentioned, one of my passions has been breaking down barriers for healthcare for our students and our families. And I've shared with some of you over the years that I began student nursing in the community health realm with migrant health and putting in mobile units and clinics for migrant health and their diabetes farm workers. I had no idea it would translate into my career 20-some years down the road. But I've been with Rochester Public Schools for the last 18 years, and one of the things that we've seen as a gap is how do we get our students immunized before the start of school? And so what some may not realize is we do have Minnesota state laws, immunization laws in place that require our students who are in our early childhood programs and in our schools to be immunized or shown exemption. And so pre-COVID, we had several students that would land on those lists, and on the first day of school, we'd have to make those calls and have their parents come and pick them up. Those are tough calls to make. We want our kids in school. We've thought out of the box over several years whether we would help them with transportation, and we've looked at the different barriers. And my passion has been, we need to go to them. How do we break down those barriers, whether it's transportation, whether it's language, whether it's, you know, not having a medical insurance. And part of it is maybe not understanding even Western medicine, the preventive medicine side of things, where immunizations would even be required to attend school. And so through our community partnership with Mayo Clinic, I've continued to float out this dream and say, how do we do it? And we've hit roadblocks along the way. And then this last year, it has been so exciting to be able to put together, kind of like Dr. Pecel said, a pilot. That is a dream that I think we've learned. Some things will open up in the future to expand. So I'm gonna give a little bit about the background. Caitlin's gonna talk about the logistics from an operational standpoint. So Mayo Clinic was a very strong partner in this. They put a lot of their own staffing into it, and, and the logistics that she'll talk about were very complex, from working with City, Rochester City Lines, the city, the Park and Rec Department, because this unit is large. But it's so exciting. So RPS usually communicates with our families. We do send out letters to our families to let them know what immunizations their child is needing if they're running on the non-compliant list. We do have our sites working with those families even now. And historically, like I mentioned, we do have, and I'm not gonna quote a number because I'm probably gonna misquote it, but several hundred students to begin, and we work hard in those weeks leading up to the first day of school to try to minimize those that remain on the list. And so this summer, we were able to put together four clinics. And this is what we affectionately call Big Blue. I actually think the driver calls it Pearl. But our goals really were to remove those barriers to healthcare. What were those barriers? We had an idea. We were hypothesizing what those might be, and we wanted to reduce the number of exclusions on that first day of school. Especially through the pandemic, we know our students weren't getting the immunizations because we weren't going to the clinics like we had been pre-COVID. And now we're looking at our numbers of students that are not compliant, and we're really trying to work with the clinic to get them up to date. And so this Big Blue hit the streets, and we were able to have four clinics. And like I said, we were staffed with Mayo Clinic nurses. We had their desk staff on site. So if they didn't have insurance, or they were looking with their insurance, working with their insurance providers, they did all of that onsite. And Caitlin, Caitlin will talk through logistics. We had some pickups. So like any pilot, the first one, I'm glad there were a few. We, I think, vaccinated seven, five which were students. And then we grew to where we were saturating at capacity by our last clinic, which was great. And so we did learn along the way. We had, one of the pictures that you'll see on the slides is a community school site facilitator. So we wanted to bring in our school resources. So our community site facilitators were there. They had backpacks for families. They had stuffed animals, especially for our little ones who were going to get a shot that maybe they weren't so excited about. We had hand sanitizer and wipes, and they had crayons. They had flyers about the school themselves. And one of the neat things I saw was some families who had never experienced public school because their parents chose to keep them home during the pandemic were coming for the first time. So this was a first-time event where they got to meet a school resource. And on the bottom of this slide, we have our student nutrition services were there as well, and they were filling out free and reduced lunch forms. If you have not met Cynthia Armstrong, you need to meet her. She is phenomenal. And I think she greeted every single family that came with a smile, helped them fill out paperwork. She was kind of the life of the party when we got together as a team. And so this was really a great group coming together. We had medical interpreters through Mayo Clinic. So we did have Somali, and we did have Spanish interpreters available for our families that came. They were, they helped us write our welcome signs. We would use chalk and things to try to make it a welcoming environment for families, and it really was just a blast.
Sure. So we ultimately ended up deciding to do four clinics, just so we would be able to pick a variety of locations across Rochester. For requirements, that bus is very large, so we needed a large paved area that was flat. We looked at going into neighborhoods that are served by one of RPS's full-service community schools. And so working then with, with Julie Lusek and those schools, we identified four areas that we thought could most benefit from this service. I think picking the locations was one of the hardest parts of, of planning this. And so since we were going back and forth, we kind of informally consulted with a couple of researchers at Mayo that work with something called the Houses Index, which is a housing-based socioeconomic measure that they use kind of in studies relating to epidemiology. We sent them kind of the map of the areas we were thinking of going to, and they overlaid that with some of their data and agreed that we were going into areas that were more likely to be underserved and could most benefit from this service. So for communication and outreach to families, we did a variety of things. There were AmeriCorps staff that helped us with door knocking in some of those community school neighborhoods. They also placed phone calls to families of students that were on the immunization exclusion list. We did some promotion on social media, mostly through RPS's Facebook page. The medical director of our school health program, Dr. Cristiani, did an interview with one of the local TV stations in town. And then RPS created this flyer that's on the screen that.
We wanted to identify need. We thought by going into the residential neighborhoods, people would walk to the clinics. Maybe transportation was the barrier. What we found is transportation wasn't necessarily the barrier. They were coming, we were hitting the right demographic, but they were coming from across the district, but they were driving. So we started to think about, well, what does that mean? Maybe this is a, not as an intimidating environment. And most families were saying, yes, that is true. My child doesn't necessarily want to go into the clinic setting. This was a less intimidating environment. We, we were pulling in people. So the capacity of the unit, we have two lab rooms or exam rooms within the unit itself, so we can do two patients every 15 minutes. So when you think about that with a four-hour window that we're there, we're at 32 as kind of a max. And we were actually thinking outside of the box, and families who were willing to have their child vaccinated outside, when it was nice, we were finding private areas, even just to have the nurses outside with the families to vaccinate, because they were here. We wanted to provide the service. But what we found, when we were on the northwest side, we were by the Watson soccer fields, we not only saturated our appointments, we were at 32, we probably turned away 15 or more students. And we had scheduled them then for the clinic that was gonna be held on the 19th, which unfortunately was canceled. What we were learning, though, is by word of mouth, it was spreading, and people wanted to come. And so we were limited. And because I'm a dreamer, and I get really excited about meeting these needs for our families, I've already thought, maybe we've all grown the unit. Maybe next year, it's something to look at larger capacity. Is there someplace else we could go? And we have some ideas of where we could go, where we could vaccinate upwards of 100 or more students in an event. So instead of just maxing out at 32, we're seeing that there's a need. And so some of the things that we were looking. Some of the things we're thinking about as community partners. So we had our community site facilitators with us. We're thinking, could we have the public library come and join us? Could we have our Parkinson Rec Department come and join us and make it almost like a block party event, where we're providing resources to our families? We also provide the immunizations. We still, to date, I did ask for our numbers today, we still have several students on our exclusion list. Had we not canceled that last clinic, I think we would have been close to 90, if not a little over that, as far as vaccinated with these four clinics, which I think is great. But it gives us room to dream for what next year could be. I think what we have learned overall is there is a need, and, and whatever that barrier is, they, our families seem to want to come to a community event like this, and they're willing to have their child vaccinated through something like a mobile unit, or maybe in a different space. That's just not the clinic. And so we're really excited about the work that we did through the summer, and we look forward to continuing the partnership and growing that into what we can do next summer.
Thank you. Questions, Board members? Ms. Nathan?
Well, since we're talking about immunizations, are there flu immunization clinics planned in the schools this fall?
Yes, there are. And I, so we have, just like we have in all years, in all of our sites, they'll be doing the school-based influenza clinics, our registration forms. So within our Meet the Teacher formats, our Step Into Learning and Schedule Pickups, Mayo Clinic will have nurses at those events that have the registration forms and the information for that. We are not, I don't believe with the vaccine, that COVID vaccine will be available for any event during that time. So that's not gonna be a combined if that's the next question that you have. But we are excited to have them back into our schools for flu.
And it seems like this mobile health unit is just a great expansion of that partnership we've already had with the immunization clinics that we really appreciate.
One more quick question, and I think I know the answer, but just for clarification. Parents or guardians have to give their consent to have their child immunized. So you don't just grab a kid and say, come in here?
Yes. They had to be there, yes.
That's a question that's come up. All right. Thank you so much. Really interesting, and thank you for your service.
Thank you so much.
Oh, I said we had to run spell check on our presentation, because you were my ninth grade English teacher. So it's nice to see you again.
Thank you. The spelling was awesome. All right. It's almost time for school to be opening again. Back to school 2022, 2023. Dr. Pecel.
Thank you, Dr. Marvin and Board members. I will wait till Ms. Severson can bring up our slides and jump in. I'm gonna move at a pretty quick clip here, because we have got a lot going on. We are on the cusp of another school year, and I would like to give the board and the community a very fast update on a number of points and a somewhat deeper update on a couple points. So if the technology will work, let me just flip through some of these key points. Of course, first, always, in all of our work, is the academic preparation and readiness of our students. I have to take this opportunity here at the board meeting to welcome our new Chief Academic Officer, Dr. Effa Agbamu, who is joining us, actually relatively new in Rochester Public Schools, but having had a slight detour with a fractured leg that she is now refusing to take time off to heal. So Effa joining us is one of the critical things that is in that academic sphere. We also have launched a completely redesigned school improvement planning process. We brought teams from all of our schools together two weeks ago to begin focusing on a set of goals that are aligned with our strategic plan and an improvement process that is deeply rooted in the research on school improvement. And then finally, this morning, I had the opportunity to welcome 127 new teachers who are out at Century High School, and I will tell you, the energy was awesome. Unfortunately, I killed it by the end of my presentation, but I know they pulled it out of the ditch. Seriously, it was a, it was a great, a great conversation and a lot of great energy. So we are on track for a really good year academically. Enrollment is looking solid, too. Our budgeted enrollment was 17,642 students, and we are at 17,647 students. And so we are slightly ahead. We also know that over the course of the remainder of August and into September, we will have some fluctuation, both up and down. It's been great to see families out in the hallway. But at a time when many school districts nationally are struggling with dramatically declining enrollment, the fact that we are right now at our budget projection is something that we should take heart in, but that we can never stop working very, very hard to make sure that we're the provider of choice in Rochester, for Rochester families. We are opening, as Board members know, we had the opportunity the other day to celebrate the opening of Longfellow. We're gonna be opening Dakota and Bishop. We opened another school last year. All three new buildings are on track to be ready. There's still some nail biters with a roundabout in front of Dakota and some other issues that we need to pull together, but Scott Sheridan tells me things are, are looking good. We have had major internal work done at John Marshall High School this summer, and that has been a race against the clock, but it is also looking like we're gonna be ready for students there. So on track on the facility side. Staffing is, as anybody in any organization in the state with the lowest unemployment in American history, which Minnesota is right now, a struggle. It's one that we continue to work on aggressively. There's some bright spots. I wish John and Jeff were here, because things are looking good. I wish John and Jeff were here, because things are looking good with bus drivers and van drivers right now. So that is, as board members know, very different from where we were last year. There are some areas, though, where we really have some heavy lifting to do. We have 89 education support professional positions, what we previously called paraprofessionals that are open right now in the district, 5.6 licensed school nurses. We have 13 elementary special education teachers and related service providers, and nine secondary special education teachers and related service providers. In a district of 3,000 employees, those are not gigantic numbers, but they are very significant numbers, and we're going to continue to be very, very aggressive in trying to fill those slots before the start of the school year. We have made some big changes over the summer in some of our technology platforms. In particular, we have switched from the Microsoft Office suite to the Google suite. There's some colleagues, including some board members, who are still adjusting to that and maybe mourning the loss of Microsoft Outlook. I'll tell you, it's going to be better in the long run. But that's a huge change, and I will just say, I know we're going to have a lot of staff who have not been logging on to their district emails or calendars, who are going to log on and experience that shift over the coming weeks. The reason we needed to make that shift, and I see, Dr. Robinson, you want to jump in, the reason we needed to make that shift is all of our students were on the Google suite, and all of our staff was on the Outlook suite. And no organization would continue to maintain those two separate architectures, especially of our size. And we simply had to choose one or the other in order to have integration, because as we know, we're an increasingly technology-infused school district. So we've made that transition. It has happened mostly successfully, but we know there have been some bumps. We are getting out to staff some tips and tricks for using Gmail and Google Calendar. And by the way, people are not losing stuff like Microsoft Word and PowerPoint that we are retaining and will still fully be available. So if I may-
Is this a good time to jump in and just say that there may have been a period of time in early July where school board members weren't getting their email addresses in case, weren't getting their emails to the group email address? In case there was somebody out there who emailed us the first part of July, we weren't trying to ignore anybody? It's just that that technology piece didn't carry over of the forwarding email address? Is this a good time to mention that? Because I don't want anyone to think that we were ignoring their emails.
Yeah, thank you, Dr. Robinson. The good news was, and this was a big worry, all of the actual messages that people had in their inboxes and the items on their calendars, that transferred over. What we lost were some of the groups. So school board at Rochester Public Schools, we didn't have that immediately. That happened with several other groups. We're repopulating those right now, but you're right, and it's a good point. If your emails were not answered, that was not a sign of disengagement.
Thank you.
After-school care, we know that the school age childcare program provides an invaluable service for many of our families. We currently have a waitlist of 208 families on that, what we call the SAC waiting list or school age childcare. I want folks who are on that waiting list to know that we are, we understand how concerning that is. It's a question of hiring staff. Again, in this economy where people have those options, we are working very, very hard to fill those slots, and we are, we understand the difficulty that that puts families in who would like to register their child for childcare. We also, of course, can't serve more kids than we have staff to take care of effectively. So yet another area in which the tight labor market is creating some challenges for us. In communications, we are on the verge, over the next week or 10 days, of having each of our schools send out a comprehensive letter, electronic communication and printed communication to families outlining start-of-school information. Those may be going out even sooner. One thing we've discussed, especially with our new communications director, Mamsoo Knutson, is standardizing the content and the timing of that communication more tightly across the district next year. It happens very much site by site right now, and we think there's some utility to make sure that happens a bit more, in a bit more coordinated fashion. But those communications are going out. In addition, communication on something that I'll talk about in a moment, which is our new guidelines for cellphone use in middle and secondary schools will also be going out very broadly to parents and families in the near future. And then, with transportation, as I mentioned, things are looking pretty good with drivers. Very importantly, the entire map of the school district has been redrawn this fall with the new boundary changes. And so, that has meant redrawing all of the transportation routes for those 12,000 students that Scott mentioned a moment ago. There's always some issues to work out, but on the whole, we are confident that we're going to be able to get the kids from their homes to our schools within the board's parameters for offering transportation service, and looking pretty good on the staffing side. And then, finally, with food service, as we've shared with the board previously, but it's good to share with the community, the pandemic support, the support during the pandemic that the federal government provided for food service has been ended, has ended. And so, we don't have the ability to provide without restriction free lunches and breakfasts to everybody. So one thing that's meant is we have had to hire people to check kids' numbers again, because we didn't have to do that for a couple of years. We're pleased that we're going to be able to continue to provide free breakfast. The federal government has authorized that, and thanks to the skillful management of our transportation, of our food service, we have the funds to cover the cost of breakfast. We're not, at this present time, authorized or able to do that for lunches, and so we will be returning to the standard for free and reduced-priced lunch. As Leah just shared, we are always trying creative ways to get families to fill those forms out in order to qualify for free and reduced-priced lunch. But it's important for families to know that if you don't qualify, you will need to have money in your student's account to cover the cost of lunch this fall. It's a very reasonable cost, I will add. And then, finally, for the school year, we are going to be gathering all of our staff who choose to attend. If someone is concerned about proximity to others during the continuing pandemic, we authorize them not to join us, but I'm hopeful that all of our staff will be out with us on the morning of August 30th at Rochester Community Technical College in the Fieldhouse for our kickoff event, when we will really be trying to begin this school year with a lot of energy and optimism. So I mentioned I'd like to briefly go into two other points in somewhat greater detail. And the first is regarding COVID. As we all know, we're not out of the pandemic, but we're moving into a new phase of that pandemic. Broadly stated, we have revised the Safe and Open Schools Plan that the board approved last year and that we continually updated to align with the most recent guidance that the Centers for Disease Control released a couple of weeks ago. And there's a link to that that is on the slide and will be on our website. In brief, here's what the key changes in the CDC guidance were. They are no longer recommending that we need to cohort students or physically distance those students. We can return to sitting the way we would have before the pandemic in classrooms and in lunchrooms and in other areas. They've changed the recommendation to conduct screening testing, to focus on high-risk activities like sports during high periods when community level spread is high. And so, some dialing down of the advice to, for aggressive testing. They've removed the recommendation to quarantine, except in very high-risk, you know, settings where we know there's a very significant spread of the virus. They've removed the emphasis on test-to-stay programs to keep students in school. We know that we were one of the first and only districts in Rochester to pilot a test-to-stay program last year. And they have updated the information significantly, which we will be sharing with families on when to wear a mask, how to wear a mask, managing cases and exposures, and responding to those outbreaks. So the first big point is we're aligning with CDC guidance. We are continuing our building-by-building and at the elementary level, classroom-by-classroom approach to masks, which we know are an issue that gets a lot of attention, deservedly so. That threshold is 5% of students and staff have tested positive at the building level. And when that happens, they wear masks for two weeks, and we assess the level of infection in the school to see if we can discontinue it two weeks. In elementary classrooms, where kids are mostly self-contained all day, unlike middle schools and high schools, 15% of the students is the sign to move to masking at that point. So we've found that that building-by-building approach that we evolved to over the last school year has been quite effective, and so we'll be maintaining it. And then, a final point on this score, it's just the mentality. As I think back on my first year in Rochester and first year as a superintendent, I'm not sure how often I said it explicitly, but in the back of my mind, at this time last year, we were out of COVID. We were happy, we were done, we're out of masks. And I think that set us up, at least it set me up, for kind of a feeling of loss and disappointment when it became clear that we're not out of COVID. We're in a good place, again, broadly stated, but we're not out of it. And so, one of the things I've been saying to our principals and others is, let's approach this with the mentality that this is ongoing, but we know how to manage it. We know how to keep our students and our staff safe, and we're going to continue to pay attention to expert guidance and learn. So there's a brief overview of where we are with COVID. Second and final point that I want to dive into a little bit more deeply is the work that the board has been very, very supportive of and engaged in around strengthening behavior and belonging in all of our schools, especially our secondary schools, where at times last year, we did see disruptive behavior, disrespectful behavior, and sometimes violent behavior become an issue, not equally across all schools, but it's something that we took very, very seriously, and we'll continue to do that this year. The first thing that we have done is we reviewed all of the consequences for disciplinary, disrespectful, or violent behavior that are in our student handbook, which the board recently approved, and we have reaffirmed those and clarified those with all of our administrators. So we really are very clear that what constitutes a disciplinary infraction and what the consequences for those infractions should be. We have fully implemented a software platform that we purchased last year called PBIS, or Positive Behavioral Interventions and Supports, which has got one part that is about providing kids with incentives, points for good behavior, but the piece we didn't use fully last year that we're going to be using fully this year is a function that greatly enhances communications between teachers and administrators about disciplinary incidents in the school, allowing, in particular, a teacher to understand what action has been taken by an assistant principal, by a principal, which otherwise would require a walk down to the office and a long conversation, which is difficult when you've got a classroom full of students. We are providing both support and accountability for our schools in being very accurate and consistent in coding disciplinary data. We've made some strides toward that end over the past year, and it's something that we're going to get even tighter about, so that we're very sure that disciplinary incidents are being treated similarly, not just across our schools, but across students from all backgrounds in our schools. We have had every school put together a comprehensive belonging and behavior plan at the secondary schools, and those leaders, our principals and others, will be sharing those plans with their school communities in ways that work for them over the course of the opening weeks of school. We have moved towards something we're going to pilot around cell phones. And unlike some of the worst fears of some of our students that I spent time with last year, we're not banning cell phones, though that's something that was often discussed. We also are not going to remain where we were last year as regards to cell phones. We are going to, and I won't go into this in great detail, we're going to pilot this fall what we're calling a red zone, green zone approach. Red zones, as you can guess, are zones in which use of a cellphone by a student is not appropriate in any context, and green zones are spaces and times where use of a cellphone is appropriate. We know that frankly, for all of us, and especially for our students, that phone has become almost an all-purpose resource in life, but it's also one that can be distractible from learning and can create some other problems and tensions when kids are posting things that are happening in schools. So phones must be out of sight in a red zone. Earbuds, AirPods, and headphones must be put away and out of sight in a red zone. Students can't, however, use their phone in a green zone. They must always follow directions from staff in either red or green zones regarding their phone. If they feel they must use their phone in a red zone for some urgent reason, they must get permission from a staff member first. We're going to have posted red zone, green zone signs in our schools to create this visually. We're going to be clearly creating the expectation that students are not taking pictures or videos of others in either red zones or green zones without explicit approval from staff. And so, what are some examples of green zones? Cafeterias, outside at lunch, hallways during passing time, and in classrooms when a teacher posts the green zone sign. Red zones will always be bathrooms and locker rooms, classrooms when the red zone is posted, and anytime a staff member asks a student to put away. We're going to launch this in the fall, and we'll be seeking feedback from staff, students, and parents on its effectiveness, and of course, we'll refine it as necessary over the course of the fall. This is an important issue, and I want to say, we have had really striking collaboration and agreement across all of our secondary schools in coming up with this, these new guidelines, and our secondary schools are very different from each other and have different student populations. And so, the fact that we reached really strong agreement on this, I think, indicates a consensus that this is, this is a direction we need to pursue. Our high schools are going to be beginning their first day only with just ninth graders to inculcate them into the school culture, and they're going to have upper, people in the upper grades there to introduce them to the building and begin building relationships. And this is something I think we really lost during the pandemic, begin building that school culture. I'll show you a graphic of this in just a moment, but we are launching a new resource called Speak Up for Safety that will be a one-stop shop that students can reach out to for additional support, not just in areas of safety, but also in areas of harassment and other concerns. So I'll come to that in just a second. And then, on August 30th, we will be in every one of our schools, that's the same day we'll be at RCTC, conducting professional development for all staff around strengthening the sense that all students have, that they belong in our schools, that they're safe, they can be themselves, and that they can work hard academically on that critical part of why they're in school. So what is Speak Up for Safety? I wish this was coming across a little safer than, clearer than it was, actually, and I want to make sure that I actually get it right. So I'm going to pull it up. This is a new resource that people in our schools are going to, and this will be on the back of every student ID. It will be posted elsewhere in our schools. And this resource will be for texting or calling by phone. It will also be for email, and it will allow a student to anonymously report bullying or cyberbullying, harassment or discrimination, threats of violence or fights, weapons at school, students in crisis, or other urgent situations. It will go immediately to one of our staff, to a real person. It will be continually monitored, and it's something that I think can fill a real need in our schools going forward. I know this is a ton, so I'm actually not going to go through some of the remaining slides here. I'm just going to do a teaser, and if board members are interested and the community are interested, we can come back to this at a later time. But we are also encouraging our schools to invest in five broad themes that really emerge from the research on student motivation. There are also themes that have been a part of the work that I did on the research side of my career over the last 10 years. They, you know, I like acronyms, and they flow along the acronym reach. The first is relationships. Connecting with those kids so they feel seen, cared about, and validated individually, and creating school communities in which every student feels they belong. Effort. Making the case that effort produces intelligence and success in our school. Teaching kids that their brains are like muscles, and when they actually challenge their brains, they create new neural connections, and they actually become meaningfully, in a practical sense, more intelligent. That's something that, for a lot of our kids in the pandemic, has fallen away, and the idea that effort produces learning and success is something we can't take for granted. Aspirations is understanding and helping kids develop powerful and positive visions for their futures and critically connecting school to their aspirations for the future, so that school becomes a means to realizing those aspirations. Cognition is helping kids think about their thinking. Teaching them that we actually have what we might call a fast brain and a slow brain, a brain that's designed to help us fight or flight and keep us safe from saber-toothed tigers on savannas, or brains that are designed to help us balance challenging questions and decide things that are complex and for which the fast decision is often not the right decision. And so, helping students understand that they aren't at the mercy of their emotions and that they can think about their thinking. And then, finally, heart. Knowing what students love, knowing, knowing the activities and the interests that matter, and finding ways to bring those into the curriculum. And in the rest of the presentation that I'm going to skip right now, there are quotes from Rochester students that illustrate how these five things are already happening in many of our schools and how we can lean into them more effectively for all students starting this fall. We're also providing all staff with activities, summaries of the research, questions for discussion and reflection, video resources to help them integrate these five themes into their work with students this fall, all with an eye toward understanding that we can't approach school assuming that it's just like it always has been. We're living in a new era, a new paradigm, and we need to start from the first minute of the first day of the school year, engaging kids along those lines. So I know that was a lot. We covered the waterfront. I'm glad to open it up for any questions or comments, but if I had to summarize, it's that I think we're on track for a really good year, but we're realistic about the challenges ahead.
You said it all?
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I didn't have a question.
You've got to be fast.
I was waiting, brother.
I know, it's your birthday, but still.
I know, I'm sorry. So, Dr. Pekel, I'm very interested in the behavior and belonging item number three that you give us, very good language to talk about this topic, enhanced attention to accurate and uniform coding discipline data. Can you provide the board and the community with more detail about that at some point? Can you provide the board and the community with more detail about that at some point?
Absolutely. We're going to be redesigning the board calendar. Director Barlow has asked for some of that data as well. As we redesign the board calendar for the fall, we will schedule a discussion of that data for the fall, definitely, and we'll make sure that we can go beneath that data to help the board and the community also understand some of the factors we think that are producing those outcomes.
And I have two other really minor things. The new cellphone policy, you didn't mention any sort of discipline action with that. I haven't studied the student handbook, so I don't know the details of that. Is that something that's included in that policy as well?
It is, but I don't want to put Jackie Peterson, our chief of schools, who of course was just talking about something else, on the, on the, on the dot, but Jackie, are there?
I guess I wasn't necessarily asking for the details, but is, is discipline part of that policy?
So have we started to articulate disciplinary consequences for like when red zone violations with the cell phones are, occur? Not that they ever will, I can't imagine that, but...
Yeah, the important, one of the important pieces is for, to make it clear what happens if you, if we can't follow those guidelines, and it's very progressive. It starts with just making a phone call to the parent or asking the child to park their phone on the teacher's desk for that class period. So there are multiple steps that administrators will take, starting with just a very simple call or put your phone here.
Thank you. And we'd be glad, Director McLaughlin, to get you more detail on that.
Sure, that was just the kind of basics that I was looking for. And then finally, I'm hoping that the students can hear directly from you on the REACH project, because I think that you speaking to it is something that the students really need to hear.
Awesome, thank you.
I have two. So one of my points, and I kind of mentioned this already in the study session about the red zone, green zone, is just to help for students clarify, like should they have either a 504 IEP medical re, something, medical or mental health reason why they would need their phone in a red zone in particular, like how they can get an exemption for those things, or at least not be put on the spot as like this kid is able to use their phone in this space when we are not, and sort of helping them navigate that. And I guess for, for me, for the Speak Up for Safety is just a curiosity point, because I can imagine if I want to report, having observed someone else discriminating against someone else, it's not necessarily just me, I can put that information in, but if I'm reporting it about me, is there a distinction that you offer for the students about which one of these reports would get follow-up directly versus ones that wouldn't? So, do you understand?
I think so. Yeah, Dr. Garcia, thank you. Both will get follow-up. Right now, the technology doesn't differentiate between whatever the kid wants to tell us. We need to look at that and then explore it. But the pathway would be there for both the student to report something they saw and then also something they experienced, and then we would have to decide on the appropriate step based on the, what we hear or what we read.
I mean for that individual. So like I wouldn't, you know, if I'm going to say something about another student or a teacher that I'm not necessarily directly involved in, you wouldn't necessarily give me an update on how you followed through, but if I'm reporting it because it's something that happened to me, and I do want follow-up, or I want to be able to talk with someone about it, when will I get that, and in which instances would that be appropriate? Because I think a lot of times what happens is, I'm going to go tell my teacher that this thing happened, and then the teacher does what the teacher needs to do, and then I don't hear about it. I'm like, well, the school's not doing anything. But they are, it's just not something that I'm privy to know necessarily in my space.
Yeah, let me take, talk to Garcia. Let's take that under consideration and get back to you. We did learn through the Perspectives Project and through the other discussions we had last year, that we need to tell students who report something that we may not be able to tell them what is done about it. Because when we don't tell them that, they understandably assume nothing is done, but if it's something that is a human resource issue, we can't tell them. So we are working to build that into all of the student reporting processes. And then you're also right, when the student reports something that happened to them, similarly, we do need to make sure there's follow-up with that. This is a new effort, and we'll be really putting, we will be learning as we go, and I'll look forward to having staff provide the board with an update, probably early in the fall, on how it's going.
Ms. Workman.
I really, this is what you didn't cover. I really liked the insights that you provided, and I'm thinking particularly when we have a discussion about red zone, green zones, that the, I really liked what the middle school student said about effort, just teachers should step back and not assuming that we're wanting to disrespect. And then on the cognition one, it was, wow, middle school, we're kids, we're not always responsible, mature, we're very impulsive, so sometimes we just want to do what we want to do, even if we know it's wrong. So I think there's going to be some work in trying to get a balance between just bringing the hammer down versus what's actually happening with that student, and as we build, we, meaning all of our community, as we build relationships with each other, I think that will get easier and easier to do as time goes on. So I think this is just a marvelous beginning, and I really wait with anticipation to see how everything works out.
Yeah, thank you, Director Workman. I'll just say, maybe if the board is interested after we launch the school year, we could come back on REACH and give you a deeper dive, because I just felt this was enough of my voice tonight, that I cut off about 10 slides that are there, and maybe we can come back to that.
So I think two more comments, Mr. Barlow and then Ms. Nathan.
Yes, mine is also related to the Speak Up for Safety. I'm just curious, great concept. This does not preclude a student from speaking or reaching out directly to a teacher, counselor, administrator to report their concern, is it?
Not at all. We would encourage that.
And Ms. Nathan.
I appreciate that the buildings are going to be communicating their behavior and belonging plans. As I look at all of these pieces, you know, like Director McLaughlin, I think parents would really benefit to be able to access or read about some of these, because I think it gives parents a little bit more comfort to know how teachers and staff are thinking about their students, and to see that they're thinking about their students with those five themes, or for the Speak Up to Safety, that their students have this resource. I think the, and I know you said the cellphone, the cellphone policy is going to be communicated, but I think the more that we can share with parents what we're trying to do in the buildings, I know that parents and students always have the conversations, but if a parent does want to have the conversation, to be able to have them have the nomenclature, the terminology, the, you know, be on the same page, however we can make that available to parents, I think will help our efforts.
Thank you. We will then move on to 4.04, Board Member Committee Updates. Board members, especially in the last month or so, have been going to a number of community events, as well as working on their community work. Any reports on any of those events or committee work? Ms. Nathan.
I was able to attend the Career, College and Career Fair that was organized as part of the back-to-school parade and block party last Friday night. You know, Superintendent Pecel was there too. We had some representatives hosting a table to talk about employment opportunities, and it was really a great event. It was spearheaded by a community member who really had a passion about bringing this information to students, and brought in a lot of higher education partners and some community partners. I met with some students who were an alumni of John Marshall, who are now part of a national youth mentoring organization that was actually founded by a Mayo Clinic physician that didn't know about, but would be great to try to, you know, figure out how to connect them to more of our students. So I know there's been conversations of where this goes in the future, but the more opportunities that we can give our kids to talk and to think about. They also did one of those, the game of life sort of scenarios where they went through and they had to make a budget for all the different components, and they had financial aid workshop, and how to think about college workshop. So it was just a really great opportunity, I think, that we should do whatever we can to support in the future.
Thank you. And just a quick note, the Student School Board group has been working on re-envisioning what the student school board will look like and how they will function during this next school year, and there, I think there are going to be some really positive, important changes. One is that they will be acting more like this school board, including sitting at this table and having a gavel. So it's going to be interesting to see how that works, but we'll have more information on that in the next couple of weeks. Mr. Will Ruffin, the second, second or third?
Second.
Second, thank you, has been instrumental in getting that going too. We will then move on to the Superintendent Evaluation Report. This is the 2021-2022 summary. At a closed session on August 16th, the school board conducted a year-end evaluation of Superintendent Kent Pecel's progress toward three goals that he and the board agreed were vitally important for the 2021-2022 school year. During the closed session, each board member provided their independent assessment of his progress toward each goal, using a scale of ineffective, developing, effective, and highly effective. Board members also provided evidence that supported their assessment. In aggregate, the board rated Superintendent Pecel highly effective for all three goals. The entire evaluation is imposed, is posted online. I'll provide a brief summary. For goal number one, which was to develop the Rochester Public Schools Strategic Action Plan and guide the work of RPS during the 2022 through 2025 school year, board members said that the strategic plan was approved at a board meeting on June 21st, 2022, and is already being implemented. This was a huge effort involving 78 people committed to working groups, as well as thousands of community members who provided feedback. Dr. Pecel provided big-picture thinking without losing track of details, and especially because of his interim status, when he took on this effort, his willingness to lead it and his expertise in accomplishing it were remarkable, and we are absolutely committed as a board to continuing to work with Dr. Pecel over the next three years. The second goal was to implement the RPS Safe and Open Schools Plan to minimize the spread of COVID-19 virus among students and staff while working to keep all PS school, RPS schools and their programs open for instruction in person throughout the year. Dr. Pecel did create an informed plan in collaboration with local, county, state, and national health organizations and experts, and with the exception of two weeks, when a staff shortage created the need to transition to distance learning, RPS schools stayed open to face-to-face learning during this past school year. Goal three was to build the capacity of a new Office of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion to coordinate implementation of the school district's equity policy throughout the district. Dr. Pecel took on a newly-created department and expanded it to include additional responsibilities, including family and student engagement, and additional staff, including equity specialists. The current Office of Equity and Engagement is now equipped and empowered to educate, inform, and influence all aspects of the strategic plan. Dr. Pecel has proven to be an unflinching champion of the critical importance of diversity, equity, and inclusion in our school systems, and has made it a priority to empower the voices of those who have experienced or who have been affected by marginalization. Added notes is that Dr. Pecel has received overwhelmingly positive feedback from community members who appreciate his willingness to meet with them, to listen, and to be informed by their perspectives. He has also been successful in recruiting exceptionally qualified individuals to work in leadership roles in this district, including our, our new director who is here this evening despite great physical challenges, and he's also created that position for a Director of Research Assessment and Evaluation, and has hired an expert to fill that position. So in closing, RPS, this board feels is incredibly fortunate to have Kent Pecel as our superintendent. This board looks forward to continuing to work with and support him. And again, the entire evaluation is available online. Then we move to 5.0, the Consent Agenda. Are there any items that any board member would like to take off for separate consideration? Ms. Workman.
Yes, this is just an observation with 5.101, approval of adult meal price, and this is something that is generally pretty routine, but I think it's important to share that the rate of federal reimbursement received for the, I'm sorry, for student-free meals, including the value of USDA foods, the minimum price that districts are allowed to charge for adult lunches is $4.95 per meal. The current adult price is $4.15. And so the reason this doesn't, in my opinion, need to come up for discussion for the board, just an opportunity to educate people, is that if the administration and the wonderful people that we have in our student nutrition services had felt that we should charge more than $4.95 for an adult meal, it would have come before us. But it didn't, so I'm certainly happy to support this, along with the rest of the Consent Agenda.
So that's a comment rather than wanting to modify that. So at this point, is there someone who would like to move the consent, Consent Agenda?
Move approval.
Second.
That's what I was looking for. Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
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 Posted, and the Consent Agenda is approved. 6.01, our focus topic is school safety. Dr. Pecel.
Chair Marvin, and Directors of the Board, this is a sensitive topic, because this is a topic that is about how we keep our students safe from threats outside our school buildings. And we intentionally scheduled this topic months ago, when our students are not in school. Because part of the tension that we and other educators face is that when you talk about these issues, it can heighten anxiety among our students about their safety, and yet we know our parents, our community, our students, our staff are deeply concerned about this issue. And so we, on the cusp of this new school year, have scheduled this update. We've also intentionally scheduled this update when thankfully, we have not in recent days had a tragedy like we saw in Uvalde in Texas. It would be inappropriate, I think, to schedule the update you're going to get now in the aftermath of such a tragedy, because what you're going to hear, and I would like to invite Scott Sheridan and Julie Kleiman up to provide this update, you're going to hear that this district is a national leader in keeping our students safe, that we are continually analyzing, perfecting, and improving these processes and practices. Final point before I turn it over to Scott and Julie, both of whom, I believe I can share are former law enforcement officers before becoming RPS staff members, is that this presentation is not going to be extremely detailed, and that's by design, because you don't give away the detailed steps you take to keep our students safe. And yet, we think you should know, we think about this and work on this every single day. So Scott and Julie, thank you for your leadership, and look forward to this, this overview.
Thank you.
Good evening.
The superintendent eloquently described why we're here, so I'm not going to expand further on that. I feel very lucky to have Julie Kleiman on board in our district. Initially, I was hired as kind of the role that she's in now, and then my role kind of transformed real quickly into adding a bunch of other tasks, and then I felt it was really important that we have someone specifically dedicated to the safety and security of the school, and Superintendent Pecel agreed, and we hired Julie through a process, and she's done a phenomenal job in almost a year you've been here now.
Yep, just shy of a year.
Okay. But I do want to start out, and we're going to give you a general overview, but like the superintendent said, we're not going to be diving way into the details, go way into the weeds on this. We have multiple layers in place of security, and we'll briefly describe what some of those are. But I do want to reiterate that no matter how many layers you have in place, no matter how much money you spend, no matter how hardened you make your buildings, no matter what type of software systems, notification systems, and all that that you might have in place, you can't ever guarantee that you're going to be 100% effective to prevent school violence in a school. And that's the sad reality that we're facing, a long uphill climb to, to try to get to that level. As the superintendent said, we are dedicated to that, and I believe we're one of the leaders, certainly in the state, if not in the nation, as far as the enhancements that we have in place here. There's still more work to do, and... There's still more work to do, and so we're looking forward to continuing those enhancements as well. When we do our crisis management planning, there's three tenants that we try to work under. Obviously, the first one is to increase the security of the staff and students in our buildings. And we do a lot of, like I said, multi-layered functions that do that. The other part of it is we want to minimize the loss. Now, safety and security may not always be related to a violent event in the school. It could be related to a gas explosion. It could be related to something, you know, a hurricane or a weather event that comes through. And our intent is to minimize the loss and damage. And one point under this that I'd like to make is when we built our four new schools, we built storm shelters in each of those four schools that aren't necessarily in place in our current schools because they weren't really required by COVID. These are greatly enhanced storm shelters that we built that would allow for all people that, the enrolled staff and students that are in those buildings, to take shelter in and up to 200 mile-per-hour winds. And so these are some of the things, not only the violent part of it, but also the weather events as well. And then, of course, the final goal is to make sure that those enhancements allow us to return as quickly as possible to normal function. And what do we have in place as backup systems in order to make that happen, whether it's generators, emergency lighting, and other enhancements that, with our relationships we have with our contractors, in order to get buildings back up and functioning again. Along with that, you have the mental health aspect, the supports that we have in place through a wide variety of very skilled employees and collaborations that we have that provide assistance to our students and our staff to manage any traumas that they might be affected by in any type of event, whether it's a violent event or a weather event or something similar. We do have, of course, these non-physical pieces. When I mean physical, I mean physical enhancements in a building. These are the non-physical ones that we have. We have Crisis Response Team that we have in place in our district that responds to all crisis events within the district. It's a very well-schooled, well-oiled machine that if an event happens, a significant event that happens to a staff member, a student in a school, we provide resources that immediately go out and work to provide listening sessions, to provide mental health support to the staff and students, and to manage those events. Of course, we have our local partnerships with our law enforcement, and particularly with our School Resources Officers. Julie and I are former School Resource Officers, Julie far more recently than I, but mine was 30 some years ago, about 30 years ago. Hers is a year ago. And, but we have this great relationship with them. We're called 24/7 whenever we have an event at the school. An example, we had a break-in and significant damage at one of our elementaries a few months ago, and we were called at 2:00 in the morning, or I was called to come in, and then we immediately got resources in place to get the building back put together so that SAC could still start at 6:00 in the morning without even knowing that had happened. We just sectioned off a place and started the repairs. But that's the kind of relationship that we have with our local law enforcement and our SROs. The threat assessment teams are both district-wide and also site-based teams. These are very well-educated staff members and support teams that are able to take information that comes in from a staff member or fellow students and utilize that information to determine the threat level of a potential act that the student might do. We talked about the Speak Up already. That's a new enhancement that we had that's, I feel, is really going to be a big benefit to our school district. We also monitor social media on a regular basis. Julie's far more adept at that than I am, but she's really good at it. And again, some of these other resources that are in place provide 24/7 access that we're notified, even in the middle of the night if there's an issue potentially in one of our, for one of our students, that myself or a list of other people that are on the list, it's a calling tree, is informed immediately, and we take action even at 2:00 in the morning, whether it's getting ahold of law enforcement to do welfare checks, or we get ahold of administrators, or we contact the parents directly if there's a crisis that we believe might be occurring with one of our students. And like I said, and that's occurring 24 hours a day as we go along. I know I'll talk about these recent enhancements that we have done. In the eight years I've been here, the door buzzer cameras at all sites, you're all familiar with those. Secure entry points, we've just completed all those with the referendum dollars. We did our secure entries. That's a single point of entry that goes through each of our buildings, not here at Edison, obviously, or at Frydale because we're waiting to determine what we're going to do with Frydale, but the other sites all have a secure entry. We're always working to upgrade our camera system, and we're always looking to upgrade systems of detection using our camera systems that we're looking at as well to increase security. We've always expanded the radio systems. You'll hear later about the distributed antenna system. I'm sure you're waiting anxiously to hear about that one, the distributed antenna system. And all our other points of entry are monitored, whether it's by a sensor on the door, where we get door prop alarms now, Julie and I and a couple other people. If a door is propped or open that shouldn't be open for a certain period of time, we're immediately notified. The enhancement that does is it allows the sites to be completely aware of a door that's not normally used is breached, and they're allowed to take action or send a security para or whoever will check it out. I'm going to defer now to Julie, let her talk about some other roles that we, options are.
Good evening, everybody. So we talked about the crisis plan, as Scott said, and so along with myself and Mike Stock, he and I are the ones that go through and update the crisis plan, and we did that this year, went through a few things. We added something this year, and I think that was sent out to everybody. That was a change a little bit on a hostile visitor, so we've changed that up. I've sent everything out to office managers. I've been out and talked to each office manager, gone over things. If they have any questions, they've been asked to contact me, either email me, and so that's really good that we have that communication. I think it's very helpful. And it's very important that we have stressed to everybody is just because you get the crisis plan, make sure you read it, you know, go through the top things instead of just having, yeah, I have it and sit down. So we've really kind of been pushing that, that you go over that and kind of know your way around that. That brings us to hard drills that we do. We do five, five and five, I'm sorry, five, five and one. So we do five active threats, five fire drills, and one weather. And that is a state statute that has to be done, so we get those done. So this year, what we've done, we ask that they get them done and not hold them up and wait for them at the end of the year or do them all at a time, kind of spread them out. And I've had no way of seeing when they're doing it until the end of the year because then they send out their forms and then they send them in. So this year, the administrator coordinator and I, Amy Kern, we have developed a safety drill Dropbox. And what that will do is that once a drill has been activated or done, they can instantly go in onto Google, put all the information in, and then they can submit it. What I get from that, and as I get an email alert, and I know right away that one's been done. I can go back into my spreadsheet, I can see who's on top of it or who needs to have one, you know, that we need to get going on that one. So it's kind of nice to know where things are at instead of waiting till the end of the year to have them sent in. So it kind of makes everybody a little bit more responsible to get them done. That brings us to our new, well, it's been a year, but it's new for some that are going to be getting our emergency notification system. That is our visual notification system for weather, active threat, and our fire emergencies. This alarm is now in almost all of our buildings, not quite everyone, but this has been implemented with our referendum dollars that we got. So hopefully, everything is, we have a couple buildings left to do, but as of right now, a lot of our, almost all of our schools have it. And what this is, is this is a drill, it's a three-colored drill, it's blue for active threat, yellow for weather, and white for fire. And what that is, is each one of those beams of those are in each room of every single school. So that's even in the bathroom. So what that means is when you have an alarm, if the corresponding button, which is an active threat, would be blue. If that is pushed, then it beams a strobe light of blue through all the rooms. Not only does it do that, but it gives, an automated voice comes on, and it instructs the staff and the students that there will be standby for an emergency broadcast. And so we've been, currently, right now, I've been going around to all the schools, and we have been training office managers and the administrators on how to use that. We highly recommend that they all, not just one person use it, but everybody get used to using that, because again, you know, we practice like we are actually doing it. So it's been recommended for them to all do that. We have multiple avenues of direct contact to our first responders. And there's, I don't want to get into everything of what we have, but just know that there is more than just a phone, just a 911 call that can be made. We have things that can reach them immediately, and so that's kind of a little, feel a little bit well on that. We have another Raptor Visitor Management System that we have. This is a visitor management system where we take a visitor's identification card and we run it through our system. This then will alert us if a sexual offender is coming onto our properties. And so what that does, not just alert the gal or the guy that's running the card, but it also alerts all the SROs, not just of that school, but of all the schools. It alerts Scott, me, and I believe some other people who are on our tree, and so we all know right away what's going on. And so we are, and I, as I, as SRO, I got a couple of those back a couple of years ago, and I immediately responded, and we all respond to that. And so that's a really good program, but what the card is used for is that not only does it just alert that, but it gives, it prints out a badge, a sticker badge with the person's photo on it, and it indicates to them, it also, the person who's putting them in, has to write where they're going into the school. And after that, I started playing around on Raptor. I just started getting involved with this because the gal who was running it, she is now retired. And I've noticed that we can actually print out a list of all the people who have come in and where they're actually going. So we're kind of, me and again Amy Kern are going through some of those things, and so we're going to be able to use that as a tool a little bit more than what, we're just using it to print out stickers and putting it on people's shirts and getting into the building. Along with Raptor, I have been in correspondence with a representative, and they've got a lot of other great programs that they are coming with to us about, and we're kind of in the works with those things, and hopefully, we can implement them down the road. It's getting to be really good what they're coming up with as technology gets better, right? So hopefully, we'll be able to add some of their things onto our program. Our AED, this year, as you know, those are the Automated External Defibrillators that are in all of our schools. And in those, we've decided this year, we are putting tourniquets in not just the secondary AEDs, but all of them, at every single one. And we are going to be, the nurses, the current nurses right now, the school nurses, will be getting trained to how to use them, and then in hopes that they will train our, the staff, so everybody can use them in need of needing to use them, because we all know it can save a life. I think that is the updates that I've got.
Yeah, as a takeoff on the tourniquet, I know it's something a little new that we have, but when I was in my former career on the Emergency Response Unit, we practiced combat medic training, and Doc Matt Stancreiter was our medical director, and he was the impetus that started the original tourniquets in the secondary schools, where he provided them, I think using his own funds in order to put them in our schools. And the value of that, if you do research, for instance, in wartime research, the thing that the soldiers die from is blood loss. It's not necessarily the initial trauma from a wound, but for the vast majority of them, it is the blood loss. And as sad as that is, in Uvalde, that seemed to be the case for a lot of the students in that particular school as well. So our thought process was providing at least another resource, a tourniquet, that could stem the flow and allow somebody that has the knowledge in how to place it and how to use it could potentially save a life. And we just think it's an invaluable piece that we're going to expand throughout the district in the AEDs, along with a med kit that has like a pressure bandage and a hemostat agent that helps clot the blood as well. And we're still in a bit of the infancy stage, hoping to have all this in place in the next week or two, but we're still working on getting the training piece done on that particular piece of it.
Questions, comments? Ms. Nathan?
I appreciate all this information, and I think our parents and families and staff appreciate it too. I want to give you also some credit for what you have on our website, where you have a detailed description of what kind of communication will happen with parents in the event of a crisis situation. It lays out pretty clearly where parents should look for information from the district. And sort of in the reverse of that, maybe going back to that, the Speak Up system. In the event that there is a parent who has a concern about a threat in the off-hours, our principals don't have 24/7 phone numbers or cell phones, can parents use that Speak Up function to contact the district? Or I would assume during the school day, the first choice would be to contact their principal, but what, where's the best contact if there's an adult in the community who feels they have information to share with the district?
I'll let Scott and Julie add too. Certainly, the best is to actually call your school or, you know, email, but if obviously something happens, could you send a message over the Speak Up system? Yes, it's intended for students, but we would get it, and we could certainly respond it. We want to be cautious that it is not a channel intended primarily for parents, but was something certainly time-sensitive, we would obviously pay attention to it and respond to it as well.
I agree.
Thank you. Great info. Oh, sorry. People, that's, okay. Ms. Parkland and Mr. Barlow.
I just had a question. It seemed that when you were talking about the tourniquet, you referred to it as the singular. Is it more than one and adequate, what each building would need?
If we had the funding, we would get multiple tourniquets for each building. Right now, there's one.
Okay, good enough. And then a second question. Ms. Kleiman, I just want to reference the emergency notification system. My understanding of the design of that is for people who are either hearing impaired or sight impaired, it enhances the ability to notify all students quickly.
Yes, exactly. That's exactly what it was designed for.
Awesome. Thank you. Mr. Barlow, and then Ms. Workman.
Thank you. I know Scott and I spoke before the board meeting, and I told them they need to answer all my questions, and, but one or two did arise since the presentation. First one dealt with the Raptor Visitor Management System. I'm glad it can queue up and identify sexual offenders so proper notification can occur. Does it also potentially identify active warrants and/or parole violations? Or I'm just curious, because we, what we don't want to do is deter parents from, you know, visiting or whatever, so.
You bring up an excellent point. It only covers the sexual offender piece because the vast majority of sexual offenders per their protocols are not allowed in, you know, close proximity to schools. And that's how it's, that's why the notification comes. The other piece that we didn't talk about is our VIE, that's our Volunteers in Education. When you're volunteering education and you want to come read to your students, or you want to go on a field trip with a student, you're required to fill out a form. And that volunteer in education protocol is that a background is completed on that person. And we have a parameter set as far as how they're reviewed, if there's certain red flags in that background that pop up. We have a review committee that looks at it and scores it, and we make a determination whether or not, what level we want to allow that particular person to be at for, to be a volunteer in our school. a volunteer in our schools. We may have to limit them to just being able to read in the classroom versus go on a field trip where they might have one-on-one contact with students beyond their own based on that background, but we have a protocol in place that we follow. And the notification of those, it's very private and confidential, of course, but it is something that every volunteer that wants to participate in on a field trip or like I said, in reading a classroom or something, has to fill out and that background is completed.
Okay, then I'm going to share briefly. My wife never wanted to go to a movie or watch a television show that had anything to do with firefighting because I'm a retired firefighter, but I saw your prop door notification. My assumption is this is dealing with exterior door exits or?
Correct.
Okay. Okay. Okay, thank you.
Chairman Marvin, I just had one follow-up just on some, sorry, can I, or no?
Go ahead.
Okay. When you say background, you mean background check?
Yes, a formal background check by an outside agency.
Thank you.
And Ms. Workman.
So maybe I, I missed this. The AED med kits, et cetera, and all the stuff that's in them are, is that, how many of them are there? I mean, is that like one per classroom or one per building or, or you're shaking your head like I guess it's not one?
It's like two or three for the building. But there will be a tourniquet in each one of those.
Okay. And then will staff be trained at some point to be able to know how to use the tourniquet?
Yes.
And just in case a school nurse isn't available to?
That is our goal, yes.
Okay.
Anything else? Thank, thank you to both of you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're on to monitoring then 7.01, referendum update. Dr. McCall.
Chairman Marvin, Director of the Board, I'm glad that Scott did not get up. We know that the community has made an extraordinary investment in the future of our kids and our community with some new buildings and we periodically update the board and the community on the progress of our, the referendum funded construction. And so it is time for one of those updates. Scott?
Thank you Superintendent. The last referendum update was in March of '22, so it's been a number of months. A lot has happened in the past few months, particularly over the summer. The credit for this presentation goes to Keon McWaters from Knutson. And, because he created it and he did all the budget updates and everything. He's just too shy to be here to see it. Giving him a hard time. This is, happens to be a view of Dakota in its early stages. And this is looking to the south, an overview. Dakota Middle School, if you've had the opportunity to walk through, it's an absolutely beautiful building. This is, this more recently, this is facing west. The area right at the bottom there is the gym, one of the three gyms, all three gyms are in a row there. That bottom area there is the bus entrance, so on the east side is where the buses are going to come in and turn around and drop all the students and they're going to enter on that east end. On the left of the screen there where you see the cars, that's the parent drop-off area and that's also the main entry into the building. And then the, the classroom wings, as you can see, are on the right-hand side of that particular screen. This is a picture of the cafeteria, kind of a stunning picture. And this is looking to the north from the edge of the cafeteria. Up above there is a walkway that goes to the upper levels in the classroom wings. This is the media center, a lot of glass, a lot of modern updates, including serviceable doors, garage door type doors that can go up and down and create learning spaces for them. This is one of the gyms. Again, it, it seconds as a storm shelter as well. This is one of the science rooms at Dakota. And this is one of the group learning spaces at Dakota with the modern furniture. Down at the end where you see the orange, there is a screen, you can, there's some controls on the sidewall that you can punch and the screen will come down and there's a big projector there and you can use that projector to show movies or give lessons as well. Very enhanced system down there. And that's in each of the group learns at Dakota. This is the café. Sideways. Lettering? As a cute aside, when you go to Harriet Bishop, you'll notice the lettering is the other way. So you're looking this way. This one you're reading from the top down. Harriet Bishop, you're reading from the bottom. We Google it, we're not quite sure which one's correct yet. We don't know. But this is the cafeteria. Longfellow is open, as you know. We did the ribbon cutting last week. A beautiful building itself. We are starting the demolition of Long, the old Longfellow. I think on the first. Now, this is Principal Adams. This is on the brick enhancement piece at the old Longfellow where we, Knutson cut out some bricks and some of the students were allowed to take the bricks and sign the, the sheet there to say goodbye. And this is just a view down the hallway at Longfellow. This is a view of the cafeteria. A view of a normal classroom. This is the media center. There is still more work to be done here on the, right there, you'll see that black space. We are putting some doors in there, they, they're just a long lead time to get here. But we are going to put some doors on there that'll provide another learning area back in the back of the media center. Another one of the gyms, you'll notice we put wood in all the gyms, including the elementary. We listened to our community who said we need more gym space and we need more for our sporting events, our volleyball and our basketball teams, particularly the youth teams that like to rent our buildings. And so we put in wooden gym floors in all of our schools. This is a group learning area in Longfellow. You'll notice all the dynamic different colors. Harriet Bishop, Harriet Bishop isn't done yet. We do have a temporary certificate of occupancy, but it is not a full certificate of occupancy. So we are allowing the staff to come in and get their classes set up this week, which they are. We still have some work to do, the cul-de-sac, or I'm sorry, the roundabout in the front needed to, they put it in and it was wrong, so they had to tear it out, put a new one back in again. So that delayed a little bit and that prevented us from doing our second course of asphalt on the bus driving because it was attached to that. So that delayed us a little bit. But they, Knutson says that we will be ready. This one has a little different coloring than the other, than Longfellow, obviously. This is the media center, still under construction. And this is right off the cafeteria on the main floor across from the office. Now, this is a group learn. Obviously, there's no furniture set up yet, but this is a similar group learn to the other buildings. This is another small group learning area that we, that were built under the stairwells. And you'll notice all the glass and the visibility that's, that's there. This is one of the wings that we created, this is for autism rooms. These have a little different function. They, instead of just a door that opens into the hallway, they each have a private doorway that has a foyer that they receive into. So it provides them some more privacy and ability to enhance the learning of the students that are going into those particular rooms. And it was designed specifically for that. Century High School Pool Edition. These are pictures of the pool. Again, remember it's a stretch pool that has a bulkhead. We'll be bringing the big bulkhead in, I think at the end of September. There's a lot of work that still needs to be done. This is the Blue Duck system that's installed now. This is a ventilation system that pulls the chloramides off the top of the pool and vents it out to the building. Locker room. This is the hallway in between the gym on the right and the pool on the left. And if you're walking north, this is the hallway in between that divides, so the wall on the right used to be an exterior wall to the gym. And the, the bit about the pool is, the pool was delayed, as sometimes happens in construction projects, particularly when there's long lead times on materials and scheduling concerns. There was an issue with the installation of that Blue Duck system and there were multiple contractors that were involved in it and they failed. And of course, when that happens, then with the multiple contractors that were involved, we had to take our time, review what happened because we had to fix it. And our intent was to put the Blue Duck system back in and we wanted to determine what the cause of the issue was and it took some time to get an assessment done. Then we had to meet with all the contractors and mediate who was going to pay for it to figure out the responsibilities for it. We were successful in our mediation on the pool, but it did delay the pool another three, four weeks. So instead of opening at the end of October as planned, it's now going to be probably mid-November, maybe late November with the pool. Unfortunately, that pretty much is at the end of the girls swim season at that time. But the boys swim season starts, I believe in November, right after that. But our intent then with the rest of the pool project is to just put out an RFP for the Mayo Pool upgrades. You'll notice that the funding for that, I can't read it, I'm sorry, I'm on a different screen. But this is the, the cost for each of the buildings. Overland is complete and we're signing off on that one as far as closing out the construction of it. Dakota Middle School funding, we're still working on that. There's no money left in the contingency for it, so we're careful of what we're asking for improvements. There are some other niggling little things that are, we want to get taken care of at Dakota that we're working with a civil engineer to fix, particularly with some sports fields that are there. Longfellow is, we're going to be closing out because obviously they're open and running. And Harriet Bishop is still under construction in the pool as well. As we move on to the Mayo Pool, you'll notice it's only $21,000 that was spent out of referendum. The rest of the money for that pool, we had to transfer to long-term facility maintenance revenue or general obligation bond in order to fund the work there. Our middle school pools, we have funds remaining to do the infills for the three middle schools that was planned. That schedule was pushed out a little bit because we, we want to make sure there's enough pools open all the time. So before we do Mayo, Century will be done. Before we do the middle schools, Mayo will be done. And then once Mayo is complete, then we'll do the infills of the middle schools unless we change, unless we change course, you can direct us to change course on that. But that's the plan that we have for that. And then there's also the funding that's shown for the secure, secure entries and the emergency notification systems that we put in and the other projects like the auditorium, et cetera. And the schedule, this is a schedule that Keon put together for us. And so even though the referendum's three years old, we're still probably at least two to three years out before everything is complete. So it'll be about a five-year toll on the projects for the referendum.
Thank you, Scott. Ms. Amundsen?
The future land purchase, then that is far down that timeline, it's at the end of the timeline, that won't be happening anytime soon then.
Our plan is to hold that 1.4 million reserve temporarily until we make sure everything is paid for that we need to get done with the referendum. And then we'll decide on future land purchase or what, how we utilize that money. That will come back to the board and ask to help us make that decision.
But the timeline on that is quite a bit down the road.
Potentially. If you're referencing the potential of building a, purchasing land to build a new high school, yeah, that, that timeline could be, or tracked it out for several years, yes.
Ms. Nathan?
So when you mentioned the Blue Duck situation with the Century Pool and mediating who would pay, we did not have to pay for any of that, or did we?
We did. We contributed to the, the fix of that.
Okay. And did, it didn't affect, I have, looking at this budget versus previous budget, it didn't affect the overall, it didn't affect any of the other construction components of the pool that we couldn't do because we had to pay for the Blue Duck?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah. We had contingency dollars still in place that we could use.
Ms. Workman?
Looking at the pictures of these classrooms and actually having been in, in, at Overland a few months ago, I'm just really impressed with how the space can be used. It's very versatile. I was thinking back to my days in elementary schools when we were all lined up in desks and they all looked the same and students didn't really have, and teachers didn't have the flexibility to meet differing student needs. Not just that, but also depending on what activity they were actually doing in the, in the classroom. So just more of an observation, it just, it really warms my heart to see.
I just need to reiterate that we aren't done, even though there are students are in the buildings, there's still things that are going to be fixed. There's still punch lists, punch lists that we have to take care of. It's not perfect yet. Ideally, we'll get to all of them and get them complete, but it is, there are functioning buildings that the students seem to be really enjoying, particularly Overland and Longfellow, which is still there.
Kathy?
I don't know if this is the right point of the updates to, to summarize because like you said, we're not done, but, and you can tell me if I'm wrong, but I don't remember any. We did not have any large change orders or, or any that I can remember in this whole project that, that changed the overall cost of all of our projects. I mean, we have 100 and, oh gosh, that's small, 185,000, 185 million to spend, 180 million to spend. And then we had interest earnings and bond sale premiums, but we've stayed within the budget that we originally proposed.
We stayed within 185 million, yeah.
Right.
As far as how much we applied to each project, that's changed.
Right.
Obviously.
But we didn't, I, I just know that there are stories from other districts where large building projects have gone wrong and the timeframes have been different. But I, I think we have to acknowledge, we, we told the community what we were going to do, we told them the timeframe within which we were going to do it. And with the minor exception of the pool, we've done it. And I think you deserve credit, your team deserves credit, our, our contractors deserve credit for that because that's an awful lot of money for us to manage in a, in a relatively short amount of time. So thank you.
And certainly within the COVID period as well, with the long lead times and the supply chain issues, I'm just flabbergasted how Knutson and all the contractors were able to pull this off in the timeline that they did.
Thank you.
Which is good because I remember seeing photos from, what is it, 65, 70 years ago of when Elton Hills wasn't ready and they rented houses in the neighborhood and held classes in the, in the, in rented houses in the neighborhood. So when you said Harriet Bishop isn't done, I panicked just a little bit, but it sounds like it will be done by the first day of school.
Thank you, Scott, for your report and for the incredible work that you've done. Appreciate that. We'll move on then to 8.01, approved research request, the effect of Ceniquil or maybe a Cinaquil on objective brain function measures in youth ice hockey players. And we appreciate those who have been waiting to provide us with this information. Dr. McCall?
Actually, Dr. Marvin, I'm, I'm going to hope that actually we can forego any need for presentation unless it's relevant for board members. Dr. Peter Ruck, our Director of Research, has reviewed these proposals. He is not here with us tonight dealing with the health issue, but he recommends, as do I, approval of this and also the next proposal. This is an opportunity for some researchers from Mayo Clinic to test a dietary supplement that's widely available. Interestingly, focusing on our hockey players, so we also have one of our athletic directors here, it's also unanimously supported by our athletic directors. And the measure of impact would be a brain scan and a blood draw. And so we recommend approval. We do have, as Dr. Marvin said, colleagues here who could address concerns, but I also want to defer to the board as to whether or not this is required, given the strong support Dr. Ruck has given for approval of this.
Any objections to moving this to approval? Dr. Garcia?
It's not an objection. It's my pretty standard, like how are parents and students that don't speak English going to be presented this information? And as long as that is taken care of, then whoever the willing participants are would like to do this, then have at it.
Ms. Nathan?
I can just say, Dr. Garcia, anticipating that question, my understanding is all of our hockey players do speak English presently and parents as well. And so, but we will, if that's not the case, make sure that translations are available.
And I think to build on those comments, just to reiterate for the public that this is an opt-in study. So there has to be informed consent and communication given before people participate. It's not a mandatory participation by any individual.
Exactly. Thank you. Mr. Barlow?
And I fully support Dr. Ruck's recommendation. I do know that there are a few of the Mayo physicians here that, to speak to this, I I do know that there are a few of the male physicians here that, to speak to this, I believe, and if they care to just talk briefly, time or their time.
They did wait for the whole time. Thank you and welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm Dr. Michael Stewart, I'm the former division chair of Sports Medicine at Mayo Clinic, where I've been since 1983. This is Dave Kraus, who's one of our physical therapists and fellow researchers. So we really appreciate the opportunity to work together with our Rochester Public Schools. We've been passionate about safety in sport, and as you know, concussion and traumatic brain injury and repetitive subconcussive blows to the head or body could have long-term consequences. So we've already utilized the study in junior A hockey, both with the Rochester Grizzlies and the Austin Bruins. This dietary supplement is safe. It's actually from Precon Health in Thorn, which supplies dietary supplements to all the major sports leagues, the Olympics, many colleges. It's vetted, NSF certified, which is probably better than a lot of the things that our parents give their children, such as vitamins and other supplements. So this is obviously a very safe type of supplement. It will be randomized, which means students will either get a placebo, which looks and tastes exactly like the actual supplement, so they will not know what they're getting. They'll be tested. The only invasive thing is actually a blood draw before season and after the hockey season. Each student athlete will be remunerated $100 when they complete the preseason testing and $100 when they complete the postseason testing, but it is completely voluntary. We have a consent form, which will be reviewed with the student athlete and their parents. It's been approved by the Mayo Clinic Institutional Review Board, and this is all very, very carefully monitored. So we're hoping for, for strong enrollment. This is groundbreaking research that we think the Mayo Clinic and the Rochester Public Schools can, can bring to peer-reviewed scientific journals and actually make a difference in trying to improve brain health for our young athletes.
Ms. Workman.
How will this be communicated to parents? I mean, do you, are you planning like having an in-person presentation where you would explain what you're going to do and have an opportunity for questions?
Exactly. Like we do in all our research, we will have written materials, but also an in-person presentation with an opportunity for them to ask all their questions. And we certainly realize that many or some may choose not to participate, which is fine. We're hoping for a large cohort because that strengthens the science.
Ms. McLaughlin.
I just had a really minor question. It was pretty late at night when I was reading through your materials. Is this for both boys and girls at the high school level?
Yes, and we think that's a real strength of this research project, because our previous research with junior A hockey in Rochester and Austin was male or boys hockey only. So we really have been trying for, for years to incorporate more of our female athletes into our research. Even though there's no legal body checking at any level of women's hockey in the world, there is a lot of contact, and there certainly can be repetitive traumatic brain injury or even overt clinical concussions. So we think it's a very valuable part of the research protocol.
Thank you for doing that.
There aren't any other questions, just two things. How do you pronounce the name of the supplement?
Cinequel.
Cinequel, thank you, that's good. And then my second issue is would someone like to move this to action?
I'll move second.
Been moved and seconded to move this to action, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This is now an action item. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Oh, not done yet.
Well, we'll vote, yeah, we'll vote. And here's the resolution. Be it resolved, the School Board of ISD 535 does hereby approve Rochester Public Schools' collaboration with Mayo Clinic and voluntary student participation in research study, the effect of Cinequel on objective brain function measures in youth ice hockey players.
Move approval?
Second.
Been moved and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the resolution is approved. We have another research request, 8.02, to approve the research for key school system practices that close the opportunity gap research overview for RPS. Dr. Pecow.
Dr. Marvin and board members, this is a doctoral study that Brad Ward, a student at the University of Minnesota, who I believe works in a day job in Forest Lake Public Schools or another school in the Twin Cities, wants to do in our system. It did not require institutional review board study because none of the methods involve either individual other sensitive data. It will be interviews and surveys. He's going to be looking at Lincoln and Washington schools in our district as schools where the gaps between student demographic groups are narrower than in many other schools in Minnesota. And the goal will be to understand practices that they have been used in those schools that may be of value to schools more broadly in understanding strategies for closing opportunity gaps.
And my understanding is he will be interviewing staff, not students.
Right. And with an emphasis on leaders.
Yep. Ms. Workman.
Will any of this research be useful to the people who are involved in the, in the study?
Dr. Workman, it's hard to say at this point. This is part of, as Peter Ruck sat down and looked at this proposal, it certainly aligns with the board's equity policy and subject. We'll have to see what the outcomes of the study are to attest to its usefulness, but certainly practices that close opportunity gaps.
Right, absolutely.
Could potentially be useful to us, but we'll have to see what comes out of the particular study.
But I mean, that's certainly an option.
Yep.
Okay.
And in the background material, it indicates that both the Washington and Lincoln principals have consented to participate in the study, so.
So unless you want, I need more time to study this, I think it would be appropriate to move this one to action.
Move to action.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to move this to action. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's now an action item. The resolution, be it resolved, the School Board of ISD 535 does hereby approve Rochester Public Schools' collaboration with Mayo Clinic.
That's a typo.
And I should have caught that before. Collaboration with the...
Bradley Ward.
Bradley Moore.
Thank you. Involuntary student participation in research study, key school systems practices that close the opportunity gap research overview for RPS.
Move approval?
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve this resolution, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution is approved. Thank you. 8.03, approval of distributed antenna service for Dakota Middle School, Longfellow Elementary, Harriet Bishop Elementary and Overland Elementary Schools. Dr. Pecow.
Dr. Marvin and directors of the board, I'm going to invite Scott Sheridan just to be available if there are questions that board members have. This is the approval of an antenna service that will further enhance communication and security in our schools. Scott is here and certainly can come up to either give a brief overview or answer those questions if you haven't.
Any questions? This is also a prep for action item.
Move to action.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to move this to action, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's now an action item. Be it resolved, the School Board of Independent School District 535 does hereby approve the amount of $795,921 to install a distributed antenna system for radio service and for cellular service at Dakota Middle School, Longfellow Elementary School and Harriet Bishop Elementary School, and cellular service at Overland Elementary School.
Move approval?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the motion carries. 8.04, approval of gun safety resolution. And before we discuss this, I would like for someone to move it to action so that I can read the resolution, because I think having an accurate, very accurate idea of what the resolution says exactly is going to be important.
So move. Second.
It's been moved and seconded to move this to action, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It is now an action item. And the resolution, be it resolved, the School Board of Independent School District 535 hereby encourages local, state and national elected officials in their continued efforts to pass and implement legislative action in order to reduce gun violence within Rochester Public School District and elsewhere to protect all children, students, parents, guardians, caregivers, educators, staff and all members of the public from increasing harm and trauma experienced in our communities. And be it further resolved that the School Board supports the superintendent or their designee in implementing the provisions of Planning for Purpose, the Rochester Public Schools Strategic Plan 2022-2025, and more specifically, the provisions related to safety, supporting and belonging. The Board also supports the superintendent in creating and implementing action strategies and initiatives purposefully designed to reduce gun violence. And be it further resolved, the Board directs the superintendent or their designee to create an appropriate letter or communication in Anwak, Arabic, Bosnian, Cambodian, Chinese, English, Lao, Spanish, Somali and Vietnamese to parents, guardians and caretakers that explains the importance of secure gun storage to be included in annual registration materials at each school site and related back-to-school communications. And be it further resolved, the School Board directs the superintendent or designee to update the student handbook to include information about secure storage of firearms. And be it further resolved that the Board, the superintendent and the district will continue to work with elected officials, local law enforcement agencies, healthcare agencies, mental health providers, nonprofit organizations and other advocates to collaborate in increased efforts to inform district parents, guardians and caregivers regarding secure storage of firearms in their homes and strategies to reduce the prevalence of gun violence in communities served by Rochester Public Schools. Any discussion?
I would like to speak to this resolution. I wanted to defer to Dr. Garcia first because she's the one that brought it formally to the board.
Go right ahead.
No, go ahead. Just don't include me.
So I think when Director Nathan, in a very nice way, sort of called us out as the legislative committee to bring something forward, it was easy to go right to the data. And like one of our speakers earlier, even though the data is something that we anchor ourselves in, the thing that's bringing us here is the children. And so if you read in the background section, it's very clear why we're bringing this forward and the information that we as a legislative committee pulled together from a number of different resources showing that gun violence obviously is a very serious problem, and this isn't something that we're going to be able to do just in silos. We need to access and reach out to all partners. And so that is at the local, state and federal level. And so that's something that we are laying the groundwork for us to be able to do, because as those of you who have been reading my Twitter, it's our damn job to protect our kids. And so if we're not going to do that, I don't really understand what any of us are doing here at the board table. But if either of my colleagues would like to speak to the information in the background section, any of the recommendations that are made, I would be happy to respond to that as well. But I think this is a very unique opportunity that we have to show our students when they tell us that they're afraid to come to school, that we're actually doing something about
And I would like to speak to the resolution as well as a member of a legislative committee. My thoughts on working on this issue kind of behind the scenes over the last couple of months really started with Director Barlow actually asking a question in December after the shooting at the Oxford High School in Michigan. And I think what's sad about this is that this continues to happen, you know, leading up to Evaldi and so many others in between. So thinking about it from the legislative committee, the thought that went through my mind, and I think that what Dr. Garcia and Ms. Workman and I talked about, is what else can we as a school board do to do our part to specifically help reduce senseless and end senseless gun violence in our community? And even thinking about some of the other presentations here tonight, Mr. Sheridan and Ms. Clayman talked about the school security update. That's one piece of what the district can do, but what else can we as a board do? And even listening to the last agenda item about the antenna system, it's an enhanced security for our buildings, this all plays a role in keeping our students safe. I see this resolution as just another tool that we as a board can use to keep our students safe. Looking at the background information that is presented here, it talks about intentional shootings. Those are the school shootings. It talks about intentional and unintentional acts. Those are the young people in our community. And it also talks about the reality of suicide in our community. Again, those are our young people who are in mental health crisis. The background information also talks about this being an individual institutional and societal commitment to address these issues, as Dr. Garcia was talking about. I categorize them both, the background information into kind of two categories. One is the mental health category, the other is the safe gun storage category. And the background information provides the statistics that our helpful speaker also talked about tonight, so I won't repeat that information. But what we're looking at here is something that's a public safety risk of unsecured guns. And I'll speak more specifically to the safe gun storage issue, because Dr. Garcia does a great job talking about the mental health piece. We're looking at the public safety of our students and our staff, and that is a school board responsibility. The strategic plan addresses this in terms of prevention, and what we can add here with this resolution is the education piece for our students and families. We are asking the board and the district to create and implement action strategies and initiatives that purposely are designed to reduce gun violence. And our speaker earlier, Ms. Jenke, I appreciate her comments. Again, she talked about the education piece and the public safety piece. Our parents need this assistance, and that's why we're presenting this here today. In terms of education, we're asking the district to create a letter and communication to all RPS families and to put information in the student handbook to be updated so that everyone is aware of the information that we want to provide specifically about secure gun storage and the education that can be provided to reduce those intentional, unintentional and the risk of suicide in our community when it comes to access and use of guns. I also think it's important to highlight the paragraph in the resolution that talks about collaboration. Even the Rochester Police Department recently has implemented a process to provide gun locks to the community, that that is, it's exactly what needs to be done at the right time, and I am thrilled to partner with them on that project. I'm hopeful that our resource officers can provide those in our schools if that's something that our buildings want to, to implement here. And it's not just a one and done, it's just the beginning of those collaborations. And finally, the idea of the secure gun storage is designed to reduce the prevalence of gun violence in our, the Rochester Public Schools community, and I would ask my fellow board members to support this resolution.
Can I just, I just want to follow up on a couple of things. So speaking to the mental health piece, I have very real and obviously direct experience working as a mental health professional with individuals who have done awful things in our communities. And one of the things that I often think about is something that is in the background information for this resolution. So not only is this an individual institutional and societal commitment, and is that necessary for us to be effective, the thing that I hope to pull out of this, that I think we often as a society like to shy away from, is the recognition that if something is going to happen in our schools, and if it is an intentional shooting, whether it is by suicide or a mass shooting in schools, the likelihood that that person is known to us is incredibly high. So we are vulnerable to someone who is already in our system, and we are the ones that are responsible for preventing that from happening. responsible for preventing that from happening. So, school shootings and suicides entirely preventable, but we cannot do this work in silo pieces. So, we can't just have the criminal legal system addressing it on their end. We cannot just have mental health professionals addressing it, and then separately, schools addressing it, and separately, organizations like Everytown or Be Smart addressing it. We need to come together in this collaborative effort. And one of the things that I appreciate about our superintendent, as you could also see through your evaluation, is that you've already done things and helped us implement practices and procedures and even policies to make these things achievable already. So, we're already moving in this direction. This is just us being very clear about our intention to protect our kids.
I just have one more comment, I'm sorry. I meant to recognize not only Ms. Jenke, but the others in the audience who were here earlier and now in support of this resolution, that they're here with our Be Smart people in our community.
Thank you, Chair Marvin. I'd just like to briefly say, when, because this may come up in the minds of some listening, when the Board takes on these larger issues like this, and as you can see, this has been a matter of Board leadership, I do not believe that this in any way undermines my both ability and responsibility to focus on the academic success of our kids. That is job one. That's what they hold me accountable for, that's what I think about. The safety of our kids as we educate them is obviously important. But in my mind, there is no conflict, as I might get direction like this from the Board, between this and what is at the heart of my job, which is student success in reading, mathematics, the arts, all of the other subjects. So, I want to provide a reassurance that, in my mind, there's no tension there between the Board exercising its leadership on some larger issues and the first thing that I think about every day, which is the knowledge and skills that our students need to succeed in society. This is the context within which they can do that safely.
Mr. Barlow?
Thank you. I wouldn't think that it should be necessary to work so hard at sharing the conviction, the passion that my fellow Board members have expressed in this resolution. For me, it's not a, for me, this is a nonpartisan issue. It's not a red issue, blue issue. It's a community issue. And this resolution, I think, speaks to where our hearts are, and that is for the well-being of all of our students and their respective families. Certainly, public safety, health safety are issues of concern. And I commend my Board members, the Legislative Committee, for the hard work you guys have engaged in. It makes it easy to support recommendations such as this. And I would just hope that our community, because it isn't a us or them, it's a community view that I hope we all are able to realize. I, in coming to the Board meeting tonight, was listening to NPR, and they were sharing that the Governor had recently announced a gun safety lock program that would be extended through the end of the year, and how local departments, to include our very own Rochester Police, would benefit from that and participate in that. And I just see Rochester Public Schools doing its part, and I'm glad that we're able to do this, I believe, in a uniformed and unanimous fashion.
And I'd just like to point out that, you know, the beginning of the resolution talks, deals with the things that we encourage officials to do, that we support the strategic plan. The actionable part of this involves providing education for students and their parents who have firearms at home about how to keep them safe. That's it. Safe storage of firearms. It's education. And we do this kind of thing all the time. In the spring, you know, we provide our juniors and seniors, you know, when it's getting towards prom and graduation, how to stay safe when you're at a party, how the dangers of drinking and driving. We provide education about not texting and driving. We provide information about drug use. It's education, and that's what this, the actionable part of this is, just saying, let's make sure that people have the information. Hopefully, they will read it, and hopefully, some folks will be more careful and a life or two or more might be spared. To me, it's just plain old common sense. We educate, and this is providing education. Ms. Nathan?
Well, I'd like to thank my colleagues for bringing this forward. You know, they could have stopped at the gun safety piece. But what I appreciate, and I think it's been reflected in their statements and in their passion, you've really provided in the background information a roadmap about what the district is doing. And for any parent or family member, or community member who is concerned about our student safety, I encourage you to read the entire piece in our Board docs, because it does talk about all the pieces of the strategic plan. And it does talk about what we need from our legislators. And it does talk about that specific, I call it a public health piece, about gun safety. And we've heard it in two other agenda items tonight. We heard it in the back-to-school plan. That whole REACH program is all about developing those relationships so that if there is a student who is struggling, we are able to identify them early. And the school safety piece that Mr. Sheridan talked about. There is no question that this is something that I think of every single day. As a matter of fact, this summer, it was almost a break because our kids weren't in the buildings. And as some of those other school shootings were happening, I thought, thank goodness, our kids aren't in a place that is being targeted, like is being targeted elsewhere. But now that they're coming back, we're committed to keeping them safe. And I think we've demonstrated that through multiple places tonight. And I look forward to, perhaps in the future, our Legislative Committee monitoring the work of our state or federal legislators, and there might be a specific piece of legislation that we eventually look at in this area of safety. But for tonight, this is a great piece of work, and thank you.
The resolution has been read, it's been moved and seconded. Are we ready to vote?
Move approval.
Second.
We did that already. But that's good.
Thought we moved to action.
No, we read the resolution.
No, I read the resolution, and then, okay. So, anyway, there you go. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the resolution passes. Thank you. 8.05 Superintendent Goal Setting 2022-23. Dr. Pecow.
Dr. Marvin and Board members, as Ms. Severson brings up a PowerPoint, there are four goals that I'm proposing would guide my work over the course of the coming year. They're aligned with the strategic plan and also the Board's previous action on the important work we face ahead of us with the budget, and then generally helping me grow and develop as a leader. I will say, in my meeting with the Chair and Vice Chair this week at our Executive Committee meeting, we agreed that there can, these goals can be further fleshed out through further clarification. I would submit that you could, should you choose to approve them at this level, and we can collaboratively work together to define with some precision how they might be measured. But of course, I'd like to go into the new school year with some clear goals from you for my work in the year ahead. So, perfect timing, thank you. You can see for the first goal, I am proposing that more than 50% of our schools will make statistically significant gains on one or more of the goals in their school-wide continuous improvement plans. Schools will have at least two such goals, many are planning to have three or four. Each of those goals will be measurable, and what is meant by statistically significant improvement is that the improvement is sufficiently large enough to know that it almost certainly didn't happen by chance, that it was the result of kids reading better, kids making more progress toward graduation, kids being, feeling that they have a stronger sense of belonging in school, kids believing that they are academically more motivated to succeed. So, that's my recommendation for goal number one. My recommendation for goal number two has to do with that second level of our strategic plan, the systems change initiatives. The Board has approved those 11 change initiatives for the year ahead. Those bullets are just a summary of what each of the plans are. There's detailed information in the document the Board reviewed at its last regular meeting. And the recommendation is that by the end of this year, and as the Board members know, we will have a collaborative team that will begin working on those plans in September, and those are Wave One, strategic change, systems change initiatives, that by the end of this year, we have a very clear, detailed, and effective plan for implementing that systems change. The example of fleshing out my goals that I mentioned a moment ago is illustrated by this, what is effective? And I think we can come up with criteria for effective. They're measurable, they're clear, they're time-bound. So, the Board could look at any one of those plans by the end of this year and say, we have a very clear strategy for system change. All of those efforts are in the strategic plan as directions we want to move in, but all of them now require further refinement and development by stakeholders and ultimately by the Board, and that's what I propose to be my second goal for this upcoming school year. The third goal I propose would be to continue the implementation of the budget stabilization strategy that the Board approved in February 2022. As you know, you made difficult decisions to approve year one of that strategy, which resulted in a significant decline in the structural deficit that the school district faces. There is a second year of that strategy that will be harder and that lies ahead, but that is critical to put us on a path to a sustainable financial footprint. And so, I recommend that my second goal be the successful implementation of the criteria and the plan that you approved in February 22. Again, I believe we could establish some criteria for what successful implementation of that plan means. And then, the final recommendation is that, as part of the leadership development strategy, which is included in our strategic plan, the Board and the school district is on the cusp of identifying a set of leadership competencies that we want to encourage in all of our leaders, and that the Board would use that set of leadership competencies to evaluate me and help me grow as a leader based upon the work that I'll do during the 22-23 school year. So, in this sense, I'm asking to align the Board's vision of my leadership development with the broader vision of leadership development that we'll be developing this fall in Rochester Public Schools. Just as I was thinking about, what does it mean to have a set of leadership competencies, I pulled out one that the Board of my last employer used, which was a nonprofit research organization called Search Institute, and we had five broad competencies, modeling the way, inspiring and sharing the vision, challenging the process, enabling others to act, and encouraging the heart. And this was how, in 2014, they evaluated me and I evaluated myself against those competencies. So, I'm suggesting that we'll be developing a set of competencies for leadership in Rochester Public Schools this fall, and that the Board would evaluate me along those competencies as part of my review this year. So, that's my recommendation for the goals, and I am, you know, eager for feedback and action, and would love to go into the new school year with these goals approved, but if the Board feels like we do need, before approving them, to flesh them out further, we certainly could do that. I also think I could work with the Executive Committee to do that if these goals seem on track to the full Board in principle.
Questions or comments for Dr. Pecow? Ms. McLaughlin?
I just have a comment that I really appreciate, I think it's the first content slide here, of having all of these systems change ideas all in one place to look at. You know, you've given it to us in so many different packages that I love having it on one slide, so thank you.
I think one of the things we did last year that was really helpful was having a mid-year reflection. So, I don't know that that's something that's officially part of the package, but I think it would be nice if the Board could agree that we would have a conversation, sort of similar to what you did last year, where you gave us an update, and then we had a conversation about it. And given that timeframe, then we would look to flesh out some of those specifics. One of the things I really liked with the evaluation last year is that we had those measures specifically spelled out with date certain. And I think that made our evaluation at the end of the year a lot more focused for evaluation. So, I'm all for a little bit more development of those.
Chair Marvin? And I tend to think that last year was kind of unusual in that Superintendent Pecow was interim, and that's why there was, in my estimation, a mid-year, a need for a mid-year evaluation. And as he has suggested, I would think that our Executive Committee, should there be ongoing concerns or inquiries, could have that occur as you are meeting with the Superintendent weekly versus, I'm not opposed to a mid-year evaluation, I'm not sure there's a need for it, and that you're no longer, he is no longer in an interim capacity.
Point taken, Mr. Barlow. That obviously isn't one of his goals, but I think that's something that we can talk about as Board going forward. Should we spend time doing that, or is it not going to be necessary? Ms. Amundson?
I'm in favor of a mid-year reflection, just because a year is a long time in, you know, in the life of a class in school. And I think that there's always opportunities for improvement. If we're looking at continuous improvement in multiple ways, how do you do that without taking a point in time and reflecting and assessing and adjusting?
Yep, and I'm wondering if we can have that discussion at another time, because right now, we want to focus on the four goals that the Superintendent has put out. Certainly, I mean...
I think agreeing on a direction now without the specifics of the direction is important.
Well, I think also clarifying the difference between a mid-year reflection and a mid-year evaluation. I mean, in my mind, it would simply be a conversation where the Superintendent would have a chance to give us an update on where these goals were progressing. We wouldn't give a score, we wouldn't come to a unified conclusion, it would be a progress report.
Okay? And can we get back to the goals? And are we ready to say, yep, we approve these, and let's move on? We approve these and tweak them a little bit in terms of dates? Or do we want another week or two to continue to consider them before we vote? Ms. McLaughlin?
I'd support approving them. I do like the idea of the Executive Committee working on the measures and helping us through that process.
Right, so, other discussion?
I will take whatever direction the Board gives the Executive Committee.
Well, we always do. Someone have an appetite to move this to action?
Some move.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded to move this to action. Are in favor of moving this to action, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's now an action item? And what? Am I missing the? I will make up a resolution.
Well, the person who moved it.
Be it resolved, I'm looking at the wrong goals. Be it resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 535 does hereby approve the Superintendent's goals for 2022-2023?
Move approval.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Goals are approved. Thank you. And that was not the most elegant resolution in the history of resolutions. No, it's...
All swell the entree.
There you go, okay. Then we're going to move on to 9.01, the School Board Goals. At our study session, we agreed, came to consensus at least, on three goals. They were to improve Board communications with stakeholders, to continually monitor progress toward the goals and outcome of the strategic plan, utilizing the goals of the strategic plan as the primary basis for making decisions, and to create methods for engaging and educating the community and staff on the RPS budget. Now, are there any modifications or edits to those three? Again, we didn't vote on them, but by consensus, we said, these are the three things we, as a Board, really want to focus on. Then, can we go back to goal one? And we have three measures there, including creating and approving a Board handbook, and these are all on Board docs, that describes the School Board's roles and responsibilities... and these are all on board docs, that describes the school board's roles and responsibilities, including procedures and protocols, creating a protocol for posting viewer-friendly, accessible summaries of board meetings, and scheduling quarterly community listening and conversation sessions for the 2022, 2023 school year. Are there any of those that you want to discuss or have modified? Ms. Workman?
Well, I just have a question about the first one, to create and approve a board handbook by January 1st. Would you anticipate that you would want one of the established committees to take that on as a project, to have something for the board to actually look at? Or is this something that we're going to sit around and the seven of us are going to figure it out at the board?
Oh, there's no way that would happen.
I agree, that would be very difficult.
I can speak to that. I think the intent was, because the policy committee had already begun the work of developing the procedures that came from the conversation we've had on the Series 200 policies, that it would fall to the policy committee to come up with the draft. And then we were hoping to discuss it at a study session. I think we had talked about earlier on in the process, we'll finalize it when we do the A, B, C, D update, to give the board some examples of some handbooks from some other districts, and give board members an opportunity to look at an outline of the handbook to make sure that we're covering everything, especially for our board members who were oriented more recently, who are looking for a little bit more than what they got.
So four of you are off the hook for the immediate, until the study session.
And certainly, you know, we could have input from others and work from others, too. So any changes to those measures? Then moving on to Goal Two, about monitoring progress towards the goals and outcomes of the strategic plan, the measures are, at board meetings, be prepared to reference strategic plan goals during discussions. And, you know, we talked about finding some way to link, to code issues that we're dealing with at meetings with particular parts of the strategic plan. And the second part is to, by the end of September, to designate dates for the annual board calendar draft for plan updates over the next two years. We want to make sure that this is accessible to the public so that they're going to know what to expect and when to expect it. Anything there that you think needs tweaking? Okay, then the third one, about educating and engaging and educating the community and staff on the RPS budget. Two measures, by the end of April of next year, prepare a concise document and video describing the fundamentals of Minnesota school finance and the RPS school budget. There is an enormous amount of this information already provided in the budget book that Mr. Carlson and his department do. And Minnesota school finance is really complicated, but he does a great job of describing how it works and specifically how RPS schools are funded and budgeted. And the second part of this is to support the superintendent and others in creating and facilitating, and I don't know if I have this right, the Community Budget and Finance Advisory Committee, is that what, okay. So this would be a community committee that would work with the district as we address our finances and our budget in an advisory capacity. Any part of that that you think should be changed? Then are we, this is an action item.
You'll have to make it up.
There's no resolution.
We need to move to action first?
It's already an action.
It's already an action item, and there's no resolution. So here's the resolution. Be it resolved, School Board of ISD 535 does hereby adopt School Board goals for 2022, 2023.
Move approval.
And just one other point of clarification that I don't know that we ever clarified, but some people might be wondering, why aren't you talking about student achievement here? Why aren't you talking about growth and MCA scores? The school board sets goals so that we operate more efficiently, so that we can support the superintendent's goals and the broader district goals. It's how our work as a governance board interacts with the broader work of the district. So that's why these goals are really focused on our work and how we work and how we communicate, as opposed to some of the other goals that you'll see in the strategic plan or the superintendent's goals. So all three of those pieces, I will say, for the first time since I've been on the board, we have all three legs of the stool. We have a strategic plan, we have superintendent goals, and we have board goals that all align.
Thank you, and that's a really good point, too, because these are specific to how this board works together and with the community. So thank you, Ms. Nathan.
Chair Marvin, I have one more comment on that. I also give credit to the executive committee of leading us in that direction and doing the work to get us focused on goals and our role here in what we do.
Thank you. Speaking for the executive committee, thank you. Okay, it's been moved and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. We have information provided about the most recent updated annual board calendar, that's 10.01, and 11.01 upcoming board meetings through October 2022. Any additional information, questions about either of those? All right, then, at this point, we'll go to 11.02, closed session for labor negotiations. This regular meeting will be going into closed session as permitted by Minnesota Statute 13D.05 subdivision 3A to evaluate the parameters of ongoing labor negotiations. Following the closed session, we will return to the board table, be called to order, and adjourn the meeting. It is now 8:14, and we are in recess.
Move approval? We'll have to move approval. We'll have to vote on it, too.
You're right.
Move approval. Second.
Been moved and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are in recess.[1047.11]
This regular meeting of school board is reconvened at 9:11 PM. And we have one resolution. Be it resolved, the school board of Independent School District 535 does hereby approve the 2022-2024 Rochester Administrators Association (RAA) work guide agreement.
Move approval.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes. It is 9:11 PM and we are adjourned.